Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting from the moon. Apollo 11 anniversary. We're doing this moon cast. Anyway, no, we're not. We're here, held at a council meeting. Chambers on Monday, July 22nd. We're only having one council meeting this month and one council meeting next month, which will be August 19th. So starting off with this one, we're going to start off with approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning priorities meeting held June 24th, 2019. Do I have a motion for that, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the minutes of the June 24th, 2019 regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities meeting be approved. Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? All moved. Additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
I know additions from administration, your worship.
Council members? Nothing from council? We are moving forward then. There are no public hearings and notices, no declarations, proclamations or petitions, no reports to standing committees. Consent agenda. The cash activity reports for May and June 2019.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the following items on the cash, on the consent agenda be accepted as presented. Cash activity report, May 31st to June 30th, 2019. And the utility report, June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that, your worship.
Dick? Call the question, everything in, all in favor? All in favor. Is there discussion? No issues? Okay. Utility report, June 2019.
I believe we did that in the last motion, your worship.
I believe you both of them. Okay. And so moved, so those agendas are received and filed. Motions, counts payable?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the purchases from June 21st, 2019 to July 18th, 2019, in the amount of $3,498,182.83 be passed for payment. The purchases include quick pays totaling $1,719,832.39. Counts payable totaling $1,278,553.95. Quick pay EFT totaling $2,549.34. Accounts payable EFT totaling $1,136.50. Direct withdrawals totaling $489,201. Debit card totaling $6,910.64.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, any questions? Laura? Are we on with all this as we're moving into July? Are we on budget or over budget, under budget, are we on line? Basically. We're on budget. Okay. Just so long as we know that we're on budget. Good. Call the question, all in favor? Good. Next. Waverden Iron Pigs Outdoor Special Occasions Application. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So we have a request from the Waverden Iron Pigs men's baseball team. They play over at Tom Lane Park. This request we've received in past years. So looking for requests to have liquor served at that facility for the end of the regular season into their playoffs. They want to use the same area that the Waverden Beevers use, which is there's a fair shack there on the site. So they meet all the regulations for using that site. What they're looking for is for usage of that for their games. The request doesn't have times, this is event time 7:30, so their games start at 7:30. Request I would have for councils to set a timeframe for that around when they would be able to serve, say at 7:00 to 10:00, because usually we do for those kind of events for that. But they meet all the requests, regulations for that.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the request from the Waverden Iron Pigs senior baseball team to make application to SAS Liquor and Gaming Authority to sell alcohol during all home games for the 2019 QVBL season at Tom Lane Park between the times of 7:00 PM through 11:00 PM be approved.
Second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry the notes. Waverdiner Football Outdoor Special Occasions Application. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, so we have two requests. I'll go through the first one with council here. So on August 17th, Waverdiner Football requesting special occasion permit from 10:00 AM till 12:00 AM over at their Waverdiner Football Field. What they do is it's for a flag football tournament, it is a football tournament last year. And so they'll have a tent set up for that, fencing involved. Their application also includes a map of what they're looking for and meets all the requirements for looking at game for that event.
Your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that council approve the request of Brent Allen from Waverdiner Football to make application for the issuance of an outdoor liquor permit in conjunction with the flag football tournament. That's Saturday, August 17th, 2019, to SAS Liquor and Gaming Authority from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Call the question, all?
I guess just one comment, and I don't know if that'll affect, that would probably come down to the permit time, but I believe from 9:00 AM until midnight is just too long. The limit's 12 hours, so I don't know if we need to amend that or if that'll just naturally happen when they actually apply.
That's up to council, what you guys want to do.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a, but the SAS liquor will, they will make that. They'll make that.
Yeah, they won't allow that.
Yeah, but I mean, they'll do it, but I mean, they could, but this one way it gives them their option as to what zone they want to work in.
That's right.
When we say joy head from 9:00 till. So.
Okay.
All in favor? Carry the notes. What is the, do you know, Jeff, what is the, how, just for other people when they're making their applications, how long do they allow?
12 hours.
12 hours, oh, so. Okay. Starting in, the next one. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, so once again, we had a request from Waverdiner Football for the exact same location, Waverdiner Football Field, for the Minor Football Day, which is on September 7th. For requests from, once again, from 10:00 AM till 12:00 AM for this event, once again, we meet all the requirements for the fencing and the tent for that location. Looking for approval from council.
Your worship, I have a motion, I make a motion that council approve the request of Brent Allen from Waverdiner Football to make application for the issuance of an outdoor liquor permit in conjunction with Minor Football Days, September the 7th, from noon to 12:00 PM at Waverdiner Football Field to SAS Liquor and Gaming.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carry the notes. Introduction of bylaws, traffic bylaw. Mr. Warren?
Yes, your worship, thank you. So on June 25th, we give a notice, a public notice about traffic bylaw 2018-3379. We open up a request from the public to provide any questions or concerns on the proposal that we're providing to you tonight. By July 17th, if you did not receive any at that time. So going into the traffic bylaw, so during the operations committee meeting on January 22nd of 2018, council requested a full review of the current traffic bylaw, which was the 2016-3346. Received the first reading of that on April 23rd, where council requested further review of the bylaw. So what happened was is that the engineering department reviewed the traffic bylaw in conjunction with the police department, and they proposed the following amendments. So you guys will see the amendments up on the screen and the report provided. Part one, they're looking at, looking at different kind of interpretations. So the current act does not include references to the Traffic Act. It does not include all the definitions, so definitions are included. Certain definitions were deleted, such as roadway, addition of recreational vehicles and the definition for that. Also was included in the second part, which is 4.2, that it include definitions on alleys, city manager, designated lane, parking lane and playground or recreational area. And then we updated the definitions of dangerous goods and dangerous good vehicles. Also went through part two, which is traffic signs and traffic controls. We added within 6.1 and 6.2, peace officer. Went through part three, restricted use on highways. We made changes to how it would read on part 11, 1 through 5. So they went through and made multiple changes on that. Part four, traffic routes and restrictions. So they made changes to number 18, two, part two and part three. They also went through and added changes to number 19, number 21 as well. So they actually added in Thicker's Taylor Street distances for parking at a curb, and that was the request from the police department. They also went through part four, which is parking and stopping, and they proposed amendments for parking lots and how that work, and they actually add that into Schedule E within the document. They made changes to number 25, which is parking an engine, which is running. Talking about no person shall park their vehicle on a public highway when engine is running unless the vehicle remains in charge and under control of the operator. The amendments to 2.1, 261, 268, the two parts. 27, number one, part B. And number 29, which is amendment to no unattached trailers, vehicle parking within that. They also made changes to moving violation, which is part number, number six. So 33, 1, 3 and 4. They made changes to number 34, which they'll amend the school zone limits to read as the speed limits in a school or recreational area marked by appropriate signage is 30 kilometers an hour between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. They made changes to number 25, number 45, which is curb crossing. Made changes to number 46, which is crossing a fire hose. They made changes within part seven, which is for bikeless, bicycles. So they made change to 50C. Made changes within the fines, which is under number nine through enforcement. So they made multiple changes through all the fines, which is 52, 1 through 7. They made changes number 56 on cancellation of tickets under Schedule C, which is speed limits. They made two changes. One is reducing the speed limits on Highway 35, on the north side of the Waverdiner, from 80 kilometers to 40 kilometers an hour for additional 150 meters north of Fifth Avenue North. And they also send the speed limit on Railway Avenue from 16th Highway to Highway number five at 50 kilometers an hour. Last change was schedules F, which is voluntary payments, which they made changes, all the voluntary payments within that schedule. Full reports provide to council, just for you guys to review and discuss tonight.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, your worship, to get it on the floor. I'll make a motion that bylaw 2018-3379 to amend the traffic bylaw 2016-3346, being the City of Waverdiner bylaw to regulate traffic and the control of public use highways be read for a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Mickel?
Thank you, worship. Thank you very much, Manager Matthew, for the presentation of this bylaw. This has been around for a couple of years and people had a lot of time to have a look at it and contact the counselors or the media. And I've had a few different things. The most contentious ones that I had were the school zones at 30 kilometers. We keep it 24/7 or we've got a time limit on it, like this proposed bylaw says, from May 29th. That is one item of discussion point that has to be solved this evening. The other one is traffic speed on Railway Avenue. The study says 50 kilometers per hour. That could be contentious as well. Other than that, your worship, I think everything else is pretty straightforward. So I think council has to get their head around this this evening. It's in front of us. I think the public has spoken, and I think council has to make the decision on those two items, which way to go. The other discussion?
Richard?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I echo what Counselor Mickel said. I think there's a lot of good work in here. I feel very comfortable actually with everything that is in here. I did get a little bit of feedback, unofficial feedback, just from folks, a little bit concerned about the 50 kilometer an hour increase on railway. I think that we can, we can have that discussion at Police Commission, make sure the police are enforcing that, and make sure that folks are following the rules. I think it's the right thing to do, and I feel very comfortable with what is here.
Mr. Ryan Betts?
Again, I echo what the previous two counselors said, and I think commend administration for going through this very thoroughly and clearing up a lot of items and clarification. I don't agree with the Railway Avenue speed limit. I do think it should be brought down to 40, going 50 kilometers an hour around some of the curves, people backing out. And plus, even from Fourth Street to Government Road, there's a lot of foot traffic that goes across the street there to the different restaurants and different retail stores. And I just think 40 kilometer an hour makes a lot more sense there than 50.
Mr. Mickel?
Thank you, worship. I totally agree. On Railway Avenue, you're part of the downtown core. If you increase it from where they want to in this study, and I cannot support that. I think 40 is plenty, especially from people that are backing out of the eye care center. At 50, if you post that, means 55, 60. And I cannot accept that. So in order to get that on, on, on the agenda for promotions, Manager Matthew, do you want me to make it, can I make a motion that we keep it at 40? Is that how we want to present this?
Yeah, so the reports presented from what administrations provide to council, and then you make a motion back to have that changed, if that's the change you want to see council.
But we go forward, we're going to either vote, that we approve this, this without amendment, or not. That's what the motion's on for. We have to vote, and then we're going to vote for an amendment afterwards.
Nope.
No.
Nope. You guys go through each one of those points and made those changes, and that's how you did that in April 23rd, 2018.
There's only two contentious issues. So at this point, I make a motion that we keep the speed at 40 kilometers on Railway Avenue.
Second?
I'll second that, worship, but it would be just an amendment to the motion, whether or not.
Yes, amendment to the motion.
That's correct.
Yep. Call the question, discussion?
Just if I may, I would, just to clarify, 40 doesn't mean 55 or 60, I don't think. I think that, that 40 means 40 and 50 means 50. I'm okay with changing it to 40, but I don't think that that means it's 50. I think we have to be very clear that the speed limit's the speed limit, and I know this sometimes, and I commend our, our, our police service for being reasonable in all of this stuff, and I think they are, but I think that that doesn't mean that 40 is 50 if we leave it at 40. I just want to be clear.
In favor of this amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? It is a tie, and it's, so the motion's lost. So, moving forward, and then the question is, all those in favor of this second reading? All those in favor of the second reading? All those opposed this? Carried for the second reading? We come back for a third reading? Or do you do the third reading now?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Your worship, I make a motion that bylaw 2018-3379 to amend the traffic bylaw 2016-3346, being the City of Waverdiner bylaw to regulate traffic and control the use of public highways be read for a third time and passed.
Second?
Worship?
Second, discussion? Mr. Ryan Betts?
I just want to make it clear that, so this is 50 kilometers an hour from Fourth Street to Government Road in front of New Age Electronics, in front of the mall, in front of the Dairy Queen.
I also want to make.
I just can't see it. It just, to me, it seems too fast.
As also, we have to understand though, Mel, even though it's 40 kilometers right now, between Fourth Street and Government Road, we're not seeing people traveling 40 kilometers, except for maybe in the middle of the night when they're there. These speed limits are chargeable, are chargeable speeds. Is the, is the point at which the police officers can charge. It doesn't mean that that's because of that speed you have, we're not saying, we're saying a maximum, we're not saying a minimum. You remember that? Because if we have to, if you have a maximum, then should we be putting in a minimum? That you have to do a minimum of 30 kilometers? Because if not, because there's lots of people that are driving 20 kilometers in this, on this, therefore, and they're supposed to be driving 40. And so there's, so are we going to say, put into this bylaw? Is this all I'm asking hypothetically, and Mr. Mickel? That if we want 40 kilometers, then we should say it is 40 kilometers maximum and minimum, and we should be charging people that are driving 20 kilometers too? Because of this, the same reasoning. This is the maximum chargeable speed limit. That is what we're saying. And, and it is clear from studies too, that people driving too slow are just as hazardous as people driving too fast. On that. Mr. Richard?
Your worship, just as a point of order, I don't think that with the changes that are proposed, we can do the third reading tonight.
That's correct, Counsel Richard. So our council procedures bylaw, number 25-14, bylaw should not be given more than two readings at one meeting, except by unanimous consent of the members present at the meeting.
So the type of thing is, so what we have to do is, we have to say, can we do a third reading here tonight? That's the question that has to be asked. By me? No, no, no. That, you, we ask that question. Can we do a third reading? That's the question that has, that has to be asked. And then you guys have to vote on that. That's, that's how that inter, that's how that interpretation. It doesn't, it is not that.
We bring it back to a next meeting.
So then that's what I was asking about that. So we're going to, so that will be. But I thought, I thought, the way that I read and interpret that act, Matthew, is that we take a vote, do we want to do a third reading? And that has, that has to be the anonymous, unanimous one. Or if people say, we do not want it, we can't do a third reading, then we can't do a third reading.
So if unanimous consent for the bylaw to go to the third reading at the meeting is not obtained, the bylaw will be brought forward to next meeting, first upcoming meeting, at which affirmative vote of the majority of councils required to pass.
So, so the question becomes, you, you have to. It doesn't, doesn't mean that second reading has to be unanimous.
I think we had to have unanimous on this, on the reading of the second reading. That would have to be unanimous. That's the part that has to be unanimous, not, not a decision on the, there is no decision on the third reading.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll go ahead. Either which way, you want to go back to the next council?
You'll have to, my passion for further discussion.
One more question, your worship.
This gives the general public time about the situation of the traffic speed that is proposed this evening on Railway Avenue. I can see it, you know, gradually, but from, from New Age to the end of 16th, I will never support that. If you want to maybe go from Sixth Street to Seventh Street, continue on to 50, I struggle with that. But the public now has enough information to challenge council, and maybe we'll change it.
And, and as we said, two people coming and saying they're opposed to it doesn't make it that the whole public is, is saying it. So, and that's my point also. So we are, and as I said, that maybe what we should be looking at then is, if we're going to start challenging about maximum speeds, then we should be looking at minimum speeds because it is studies have shown also too, the minimum, that too slow is just as dangerous as going too fast, too. So, go ahead, Twitter?
I'd just like to add to it, this isn't a decision I took lightly. It, I'm making my decision based on what our engineering department has found and the police department, and they're the ones making the recommendation. It's not my recommendation, but I do agree with it, and I think they're better positioned to understand the hazards associated with driving. They're the ones who police it, and they're the ones who deal with the road condition. So it's, it's not council's decision to do this. It was a decision or recommendation made by city engineering and the police departments.
Correct. But we will bring it back to next, next meeting on the 19th. Moving forward. There's no unfinished business, new business, home occupation. Amanda, if you would, please.
We've received an application from Nicole Thideman to operate a business for holistic health wellness at 1871 Eaglesham Avenue, which is located in the R1 Zone in the Burnway Place subdivision. The business will operate Monday through Sunday during evenings and weekdays with no clients permitted after 9:00 PM. This would be considered a controversial use as the occupation would involve clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking will be in the driveway available for the clients at one per appointment. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on June 24th to all neighbors within a 75 meter radius of the applicant's home, and no concerns or objections were received. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the home occupation at 1871 Eaglesham Avenue, subject to the following conditions. No person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the street address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review for compliance. Owners driveway shall be used for off-street parking for clients. No client shall be directed to the home after 9:00 PM on any day, and city away from business license is required prior to operation of the home occupation.
You have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that council approve the home occupation at 1871 Eaglesham Avenue, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the ad, the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owners driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients. No client shall be directed to the home after 9:00 PM on any day, and city away from business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home occupation.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Call it, call the question, all in favor? Carry the notes. Next, home occupation, 37 11th Street. Amanda?
An application has been received from Diedrich Cameron to operate a business for massage therapy treatments at 37 11th Street Northeast, which is illegally non-conforming use located in a light industrial zone in the original townsite subdivision. The business will operate Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM through 8:00 PM with minimal traffic increase. This would be considered controversial use as occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated traffic increase, parking will be available in the driveway for the clients as there will be one per appointment. Neighborhood notices were mailed out June 24th, 2019, to all neighbors within 75 meters radius of the home. No objections or concerns were received, therefore, staff recommends council approve the home occupation for 37 11th Street, subject to the following conditions. That no person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling in which home occupation occurs shall be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owners driveway shall be used for off-street parking for the clients, and a city away from business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home occupation.
Motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that council approve the home occupation at 37 11th Street Northeast, subject to the following conditions. No person other than the resident of the dwelling shall, dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs. occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed zero point zero nine two meters, square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owners driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients. No client shall be directed to the home after nine P M on any day and the city of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to the operation of the home occupation.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to thank Amanda for all of her hard work in getting these through and I want to congratulate everybody on that entrepreneurial spirit that's good to see.
And, and in the spirit of your, your statement there, I want to, uh, I'm kind of wondering where this no advertisement media has come, uh, comes from and how ancient that, because we have got a lot of ancient laws that are captivated in our laws within our country and this was way, probably put in way before the days of Facebook. So where is, where does that one come from and why? I guess the question becomes where and why?
Well, it's in the zoning bylaw. The why I couldn't tell you. It's been here as long as I have been, so we can definitely look at other cities and see what they're requiring to.
And that's what I'd like to see because I'm sure that that law was in way before Facebook, way before this other stuff. And this is, there's something that's very, and every time we've done one of these, I find it very archaic and I think that it's very, very archaic continuing. And in the, like you say, we have got this idea of continuing, wanting to worship and think, why wouldn't you be able to be allowed to advertise on Facebook?
I, I guess, Your Worship, you can still advertise, you just can't say the address. So that's really all you can't say.
Yeah, but I mean, why, why can't say the address?
Well, I, I guess I'm looking at as then you're pushing traffic to that unnecessary traffic just for someone to drive by.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
That's just my thought. I, I understand where you're coming from.
Also then, that, that should be made very clear to these people. You can advertise, but you just can't say the address.
And, and I guess that's what it does say.
So, so long as that's, that is made, me, made clear, that's good. All right, at that point, any more, uh, uh, if there's no more discussion, then call the question. All in favor? Carrie Namsley. Roll-off truck tender. Mr. Warren?
Yes, Your Worship, so we have a request from, uh, superintendent of Public Works in part of Clodren, uh, looking at purchasing, uh, roll-off truck. Tender went out, uh, they received, uh, a total of nine, uh, bids, uh, from eight firms. Uh, so right now, within our budget of this year, uh, the fleet budget has a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of, uh, roll-off truck. Uh, and also he's looking at funds to be, uh, moved from the current landfill project, uh, which engineers told me there's some funds available to be moved to be able to purchase, uh, a truck. Um, like I said, uh, he received, um, nine bids from eight firms. Um, he is, uh, making a recommendation that they go with the lowest, um, bid, which is from Falcon Equipment or Regina, um, for, uh, freight line, chassis, uh, multi-lift and roll-off system with a warranty of twenty-four months for chassis and sixty months for the roll-off. Uh, the net cost would be a hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And once again, a hundred thousand will come from the fleet budget and he's looking for eight, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars coming from the landfill project.
Your Worship, I have a motion that, uh, the tender of the new tandem chassis bin roll-off truck be awarded to Falcon Equipment or Regina in the amount of a hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, with the expense being shared between fleet services of a hundred thousand and the capital landfill improvement project of eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Mr. Mickel? Phil, I'm gonna ask you a question, Phil, and then hopefully I don't put you in the spot. I don't think I have or will. Can you explain this roll-off truck, what's going on with it? Like, this is something new. We've never had one before. This is because of our new landfill, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
For the new bins that we're going to be ordering, uh, this is something of a transfer station, uh, setup and this is just in order to collect and maneuver. So, yeah, it's all to do with all of our upgrades.
So what would happen? Like, there's four or five bins at, at the landfill. People will fill those bins. This truck then would pick those bins up. Is that correct, Phil? They're taken to the proper place of the landfill?
Correct. This one has the camo hoist, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you. This then gets down to the discussion. Do people like Peterbilt or Freight Line or International? And I guess we have to make sure we remove ourselves from the prejudice of that. Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Namsley. Audited financial statements and public accounts. Laura?
So we've received the audited financial statements from Cogent Chartered Professional Accountants. Um, if they're approved today, they'll be available on our website next week, early next week or the end of this week. I just need to get the, um, statements that don't have draft on them from Cogent. Um, so this year, or so it'd be, it's the December thirty-first values. Our financial assets are just over forty-six million, liabilities at four point three with net financial assets of forty-two million. Um, the financial assets and liabilities have both been for this year and last year adjusted by, to take the hospital levy out, so we're not reporting them as an asset to us because they aren't. We have to give that money to the hospital foundation, so there's been a note added to our financials for that. Our net, our non-financial assets, that includes our, um, capital assets and prepaid in stock, so that's at seventy-eight million dollars. Um, so our, at the end of two thousand eighteen, our revenues were twenty-one million. That included eight point seven in government grants. That was primarily due to the reservoir expansion and the grants are rece- received for that. Um, our expenses were twenty-three million, just about twenty-four million. And so we had a net surplus of five point eight million. Our, our additions to capital over the year were thirteen point eight million, which majority of that did take up for the reservoir and we disposed of seven hundred thousand dollars in assets. Um, some of the bigger items that we purchased throughout the year was the new, um, fire track and, let's have a look. That was one of the main, that was pretty, the biggest item besides, um, the reservoir expansion costs. So right now, the hospital levy is about, it's just over four million. At the end of two thousand eighteen, it was just over four million. So we're on target to donate or to give the hospital foundation six million dollars that we've raised for them and it'll be done at the end of twenty twenty. Any questions?
Is there is to be a motion to accept this? Can I have a motion so then we can have discussion? I'll make a motion and we accept the report as the treasurer presented.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
The discussion is that I know that we, uh, there was always some discussion about the price of the, you know, the fire trucks. Fire trucks are very expensive, um, this and we even got deals, but we are in very good shape of this. But it has to be remembered that fire department expenses have been, uh, historically a thing that is terrible all the way through and always discussed. Reading a book on the growth of Prince Albert from eighteen sixty-six to nineteen sixty-six and even in nineteen oh two, they were discussing about the expense of fires and then fires burning down and the cost of insurance. We need to have these fire equipment to keep our insurance rates within reason within our city and that's why we have fire departments that we have. So if there's any question as to why we're spending money on our fire department, that's why. Hospital levy, as you said, twenty twenty, it ends and that's, so within one more year, we'll be done all of that. Other questions? Comments? With nothing said? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Namsley. Inquiries and announcements? Let's go around the table. Start at Mr. Van Betje first.
Mister Richards? Thanks, Your Worship. But just, uh, kudos to everybody at the Ag Society and the Chamber and, and all the work they did throughout the first part of July and into all of July on parade and the fair and all of that. It was a outstanding summer in our city.
Mister Chuzzle?
Yes, uh, I guess, uh, something I'd like to mention, uh, Nickel Lake is having a, uh, a one-day slow pitch tournament and summer party on Saturday, August third. Uh, not, not bringing back the old cancer jam, but start, trying to start a new event. Uh, there's three bands, uh, the board members are doing a free pancake breakfast, uh, car show, beer gardens, so kind of an all-day event going on, uh, bounce houses for the kids, mini golf. So, yeah, just, um, everyone want to come check it out? It's open to the public, so, uh, it'd be a great event for everyone to come out and check out all the improvements in Nickel Lake.
What, what day to get?
Saturday, August third.
Okay. Mister Ri- uh, Mickel? Anything? No? Couple things that I want, uh, inquiries. If you would be so kind, Mister Warren, that I would like to get a true interpretation about that third reading, the unanimous. My interpretation of reading it is that there has to be a vote on, by the, by council to whether they can go ahead with the third reading on that and that has to be unanimous. And, but the other one, because we went through this once before, so just to get a clarification of that, point of clarification on that. And is that not that the second reading has to be unanimous? But that the vote to go forward on a third has to be unanimous?
So from my reading from the bylaw, uh, under the point fourteen, a bylaw should not be given more than two readings at one meeting, except by unanimous consent of the members present at the meeting. So it means that that vote had to have unanimous consent. Uh, unanimous consent for the bylaw to go a third reading at the meeting is not obtained. That's number fifteen on this one. The bylaw will be brought forward to a upcoming meeting, uh, at which, uh, affirmative vote of a majority of the council is required to pass the bylaw, so that's not-
So, so, so the point is, that's my point, is that there has to be a vote to say we, we can go forward on that.
That's at the next meeting.
Uh, no, there, there has to be a vote to say that we can't do it on that. So just give me an interpretation on that, if you could, for correct reading of that.
Yeah, so my interpretation of reading that is that if that second reading or any of the first two readings don't have unanimous voting, you cannot move it on to another.
And I'm, I'm saying that I don't agree with that interpretation. I'm agreeing that it's, that you have to have, you have to have a, a vote to say that you can go forward. So let's get clarification before we come back on the next one. Okay? The other one is that, uh, we want to, uh, congratulate, in, in our police department, Linda Montango. She is, uh, receiving an award for Canadian, by the Canadian Chiefs of Police, which is, uh, for her This Rise on Us, uh, program, which is pretty good considering the size of our department. And usually these awards go to department size of Vancouver and Toronto and monstrous sized departments. This one, this year, she is, uh, receiving this Canadian recognition across the, for this one, so congratulations. On next week, the Junior Herford Association is in town and there's probably about four hundred head in there and that will be, uh, a huge livestock show that Waverne has had onto here, which is very good to see. Continuing work on Sims Avenue is just well completed, is that?
Yeah, there's complete work on Sims Avenue that should happen sometime this week. Uh, the continued work as well on Government Road. Um, so right now we have a three-week, uh, process into that and everything's going really well on both the Sims Avenue and on the Government Road project with the-
And the next, the next, uh, and there's a couple of the paving projects which will be-
Yeah, so going, yeah, and so, so going into, uh, into August, we have some other paving projects, so United was provide, uh, the bid for that. Uh, we'll be doing Sixteen Street, uh, and we'll be doing Mark Corwin Gardens as well.
And this is the most that we've done in probably five years.
Yeah, this is, this is in seven years. This is major paving for us, major, major projects for us right now.
So this is a very good, and it's so, very good to all the staff, engineering and all of our staff that are watching over this to make sure that this is, uh, going very well on that. So it is very good. With that being said, uh, is there anything else? Anybody else? With nothing else, we'll call this meeting adjourned.